The December 14, 2020 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board is hereby called to order. Before we begin tonight, I just want to renew my thanks to everybody that's filled in in my absence. With a special thanks to Julie Talbert, our Vice Chair, for a terrific job done under such short notice, unexpected. And a very special thanks to my wife Judy. Without whom I don't think I could have got through this. I love you.
And I'd like to say, Mr. Chair, it is so nice to have you back in that chair, chair again.
Thank you. At this time, the Chair calls upon Mr. James Harris for our invocation.
Mr. Ray. Most gracious heaven and Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity we can meet for our December 14, Rockingham County Planning Board meeting. Lord, we just thank you so much. Your brother Paul Sandwich is back with us tonight. Just thank you for his speedy recovery, and it's just so good to see him be with us as we review the Rockingham Vision Plan for the upcoming year. It just helps us to take heed to it and have all the understandings in regards to our future. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. At this time, we need to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Has everyone had a chance to look at it?
I make a motion that we approve the meetings minutes from the November 9 meeting as written.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting, November 9, 2020. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. No opposing votes being shown. The motion to approve the minutes is adopted. Now, before we begin, the presentations from Eric and our Community Development Director, Carrie Spencer. I've been asked to advise you that it's very important that we not talk over one another while the video presentations are being made. If you have a question during either Eric's or Carrie's presentation, please write down your question, and at the conclusion of their presentations, we'll get to questions. And I'll ask you then to raise your hand if you have a question, and we'll just do them one at a time until we get done. Okay, Carrie, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Paul. I think, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I don't know if the feed looks very good, but I wanted to start by reviewing the comments that you all, those of you who submitted comments after reviewing the land use plan. And I'm just, I'm going to go through all of them and address them as I, as I see to address them, but I would love to hear if there's more comments from you or if I haven't covered something that you're concerned about. So the first comment was what involvement by municipalities are in place to make the plan successful? The big answer to that is that the plan is focused on the unincorporated area of the county. However, the municipalities were included at the first contract. At the time of the first contract, we had a forum of municipal leaders from all of the towns to ask and cities to find out what their vision was and to be sure that we were sensitive to those visions at the fringes of those municipalities in the county. The other, the other thing is that the plan has an example streetscape design for a typical Main Street downtown area, which we feel is the very best, the single most impactful thing we could have included in this plan that would help the towns, the Main Street towns especially. Is there any involvement with Henry County to the north for shared work with the industrial park plan for Berry Hill Road or the increase in interest in the northern part of 220 within the county? The answer to that is Economic Development Director stays in close contact with those, with those leaders in that part of the state, and we have included the industrial park, Berry Hill, in the regional context map on page eight. That was one of the things that we considered when we were creating that map. With a renewed focus on quality of life, are there plans to invest in creating, maintaining, expanding, or repurposing trails to encourage use and interest in our rural setting? It's a really, really good point. And one of the examples given was more river access points, walking, biking trails, and how up to date is the Rockingham County Pathways Trails Plan. The recreation goals are on page 84. We have included plans that we've been made aware of that are, that have been adopted for the county, and the, and I could say that the Piedmont Tribe Regional Council and the Land Conservancy are actively working toward pathways plan updates. Dan River Basin Association is also going to be part of that. So it's a very active group of folks focused on recreation. One of the goals of the plan is to try to create a good consolidated communication path between those individual groups and the county's Parks and Rec Board. The timeline, what is the timeline for water and sewer improvements along 220 and 158 in the southern part of the county? Maps 11 and 12, which are on pages 80 and 81. Also, Appendix A is very detailed information about infrastructure projects and timing. We've been working hand in hand with developers interested in that area to make sure that we've catalogued their needs, their capacity needs, and their timing, and we continue to, to work this timing program into the capital improvement program now. So land use plan is only as good as the education plan to instruct, graduate, and retain our graduates. I'm aware of RCC, the community college plans for improvement, but have a concern, what about our K-312 grades and low test scores? What involvement does Rockingham County Schools play in our future plans? And can anything be done to help improve those scores? This has been, right from the start of the plan, it's been a strongly recognized issue of having a good balance to the quality of life in the county. So we had interviews with the school board. We talked to them about the expansion that we were expecting to ensure that they were in line with it. And right now, they are conducting a land use study of their own that they have involved us in so that we can coordinate growth with the capacity of their facilities. And I do believe the school board is very active on the, on this front of test scores and grades. Economic development is doing a good job at bringing interest to our county. What feedback are we getting from projects that would help us focus on a solution to obstacles that would prevent them from locating here? So the, again, Economic Development Department and planning communicate a lot, and we talk about, the one example that I was going to give is the need for an east-west connector that would help connect Eden to Highway 29. We talk about quality of life initiatives, we talk about housing, and all of these things have been incorporated into the implementation chapter of the plan, things that would support future investment from development. Rocketop is a collaboration between RCC and RCS to invest in the county's future. In regards to future industry that we bring in, is there a plan to include them in the land use plan as it relates retaining our graduates? I had, I don't know that we've done this yet, but we could include a paragraph, sort of a nod to RCS programs, in the county profile schools section so that we've, you know, at this point, it would be making people aware of that. I don't know that there'd necessarily be a particular action item other than to maintain awareness with that and work together with them. And the workforce development program at RCC works very closely with economic development, or Economic Development Department. So that's a really good collaborative effort as well. Let's see. My interest in promoting tourism development, specifically sports, focused as it relates to land use has peaked. What plans do we have as a county to capture that opportunity? I could point out how Eden uses Freedom Park as a huge draw for baseball and softball tournaments that bring hundreds of people to towns each weekend and, as a good example. So the goal, the goal to create an interlocal sports committee moves us in this direction. From that point, we would sort of leave the realm of the land use plan and move into a more of a, perhaps through the Parks and Rec or facilities or myself, it would be a follow-up to see if there's anything that we can do to encourage that kind of committee. But that would be the, the, most of the sports facilities by, by nature are located in the municipalities. So it would be a matter of making sure that we're making that information available and known to folks that are interested in locating here. So there is, we, we tried to meet at six o'clock. Philip, I'm kind of looking at your notes right now, but we're unable to do it because of scheduling problems and the ability to note it. We would have had to notice the meeting time earlier. So I'm hoping that with this conversation and your time to review the plan, that we're able to, and the questions that you might ask today, or I'm going to give you that opportunity for feedback and input. The other, the last comment, and I think there's some, some others. Yeah, sorry. Our, okay, there's a lot of concern about how our density average instead of lot size will create land use patterns that won't upset the rural character of the county, and we're going to move on to that later. We're going to get into that in more detail so that you can have a better understanding for what that means and what it will play out in the UDO. There was another comment about the growth forecast being light considering the current migration of households from more populated counties like Guilford to Rockingham where housing costs are much less. Also believe there's a fundamental change occurring in the nature of work as a result of the current, result of the current pandemic. This change will allow workers to work from anywhere, and resultant migration will be from large cities to rural locations such as Rockingham County. We've already seen that along with low interest rates and land prices, people wanting to move out of the cities, people wanting to move into more rural areas. We've seen a lot of building in the last few months, more than, certainly more than we thought we would see during a pandemic. So yes, you're absolutely right. The, the point that we're in the middle of a growth spurt makes it difficult. We have to use recorded data to reflect in our plan. So there is a statement in there, or there's something that we put in there more recently, saying that this data, however, is reflecting numbers which have not yet been influenced by the current growth. And in fact, we haven't seen the 2020 census yet. So my suggestion to the Board of Commissioners, it's going to enter you, is going to be to look at this again in two years rather than the typical five years that a land use plan is reviewed. My suggestion won't be to update the land use plan, but to update the statistics and the demographic information, or that we are still on track. The options for different housing arrangements are, I like the options for different housing arrangements such as townhomes. I believe these would certainly attract more homeowners that would like to live in our county. However, I would like to see more substance in the plan for people who live in structures such as tiny houses and larger recreational vehicles to accommodate these type of living arrangements. The land uses and services they require will have a significant impact on the UDO to regulating such living arrangements. So there's two, two parts of that. The UDO revision does include flexibility that would allow for more options like tiny homes and accessory buildings. Second, home on a lot sort of thing. There's more flexible standards for that. And in tiny homes, there is no, as long as a tiny home meets the building code, we have absolutely no prohibition against them. And the smaller lot sizes that we'll be allowing could potentially support tiny homes. The planned development ordinance that we've got in there could very well support communities of tiny homes or mixes of home sizes, including tiny homes. So we have a lot of flexibility. The main thing about these is that we don't prohibit them, is that we're not prohibitive. The recreational vehicle issue is constrained, very strictly constrained by building code, and those, the vehicles are made for recreational use and movement and not for residential use. When they're located in a RV park, then they can be, the park itself can be outfitted to meet the building code. Still there, though, they're considered for temporary use. That is something that the building code does not yet support, is being able to live in an RV for an extended, extended period of time, excuse me. The plan did not seem to cover the growth potential on the US 29 corridor. The potential for high growth could have an impact on water, power, and sewer services required for the county. And so at this time, the county's not planning to provide services over there themselves. The municipalities, the cities, provide services on that part of the county, specifically Reedsville to Highway 29. And it's a, it's a happy balance really because Reedsville provides those services and then gains the benefit of the tax, the taxes that grow from the properties that are served by those services. So that is, growth along that corridor really will be more dictated by Eden and Reedsville's plans for growth. That is, however, another thing that we can look at in two years when we see what the demographics, any sort of demographic changes that have been brought to us. I'll also mention that the planners of those cities and I do get together and talk about what's going on in our various wheelhouses. So that's also very helpful. So I'm going to leave it at that. Any, none of the concerns about density and what the land use patterns that will provide, I'm going to leave for discussion as it comes out of the plan discussion. So I'll, that, that is what I have for comments. Let's go ahead and have, my, I'm such, it's such a delay. Let's go ahead and have Eric make his presentation, and then we can circle back.
Can everyone hear me?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
All right. I'm going to attempt to share my screen, which looks like it's going to work out. Very good summary there. And Carrie, I know that we've got, I'm holding a number of exhibits that you might want to call up at different times as well. So just feel free to jump in, and I'll get, put those up as you see fit. During the last presentation that I made to the planning board, we discussed just the, the land use plan generally. We talked about the missing middle. We talked about infrastructure. I thought that for this presentation, I would just run through Chapter 4, which is really the heart of the land use master plan, the recommendations chapter, which is broken into five different planning elements, land use, economic development, transportation, infrastructure, parks and recreation. Mainly wanting to focus on 4.1, the land use component. Make sure there's plenty of clarity about this section. We did spend some time in the last meeting talking about the future land use map, so I don't think that's going to be a big surprise. Which, as I mentioned, is going to be a, a map that you all reference regularly as you look at conditional zoning or rezoning requests. Based on comments at the last planning board meeting, it seemed that this map was well-received. It created some order. We're not proposing intense density at these different rural nodes, but just trying to create a little bit of organization and a little bit of predictability when it comes to the location for neighborhood commercial. And then, of course, if developers are able to come with a compelling and creative proposal for doing some different types of housing types around those rural nodes, that would be welcome and should be considered as part of this land use plan. The 01 preserved, you know, this includes your flood plains, your floodways, your, you know, your most reserved lands is 01 district. And you see those in the dark, you know, state-owned property. If you go down to the ledge and you see that rivers and floodways are also included inside that 01. So in the 01, that's where you see a lot of your environmental-related policies there. 02, your reserve lands. These are areas where, you know, your more classic RA zoning district, rural agricultural zoning district, you're going to have very limited public water infrastructure and sewer infrastructure is essentially not available or nor projected within these areas. We call for a density average of around one to one and a half dwelling units per acre, depending on environmental conditions in this, in this 02 reserve area. The G1, low density, this is the air, the yellow areas that are just outside of the rural neighborhood nodes. Exhibit 14, which has, is actually, has two exhibits, Exhibit 14-1 and Exhibit 14-2. These are new exhibits. If you recall, in the last meeting, I mentioned that we are still finalizing a couple of exhibits. These are those exhibits. And Exhibit 14-1 shows a concept of a rural commercial node where the buildings are a little bit more oriented towards the road, your parking's either on the side or the rear. This is not required. This is very difficult to implement in an environment where you're not really creating a walkable community necessarily. It's still going to be somewhat suburban, but to the extent possible that you can create that type of form to, you know, to actually create a place, to kind of create a form that welcomes people and signals to people that they've arrived at some area. These lots are relatively large lots. The density average here is 1.15 dwelling units per acre, so pretty, pretty low density when it comes to, to that. 14.2 is a variation of this, where here we explored a roundabout at this rural node. Again, we put the commercial. And then we said, what if we created some smaller lots and had some shared open space that could also serve as shared septic areas if there wasn't any sewer infrastructure? And the result there is you could get, you know, some, some more housing and so forth. The density average did not change. We still have the same amount of density in this concept as you do in the other concept, more or less. What changes is the housing type and the amount of open space. So when you shrink the lot sizes and you expand kind of the housing typology and allow different types of homes, but then you start taking that space that would have been broken into larger lots and you start creating shared open space, that's where you, you know, create something different. Right now, the way the ordinance is set up and your land use plan is set up, there really isn't that flexibility for the developer to even consider something like this. And it's not to say that this is going to necessarily be easy when you don't have water and sewer, particularly if you, you've got to at least have water in this scenario. But what we're trying to do is create a land use plan and a framework that would at least allow or entertain this type of idea, particularly around your commercial nodes where, you know, it's more appropriate to have a little bit more density. And density is really not the correct term there. It's, it's really a change in housing type. Again, we're going from large lots to small lots, but we're not really adding more houses necessarily. We're just creating more shared open space. So I don't reiterate that, but I'm just trying to be really clear on that particular point.
Eric?
Yeah.
I wanted to reiterate, when we say commercial zoning, this is still relatively low-density.
Yeah.
Commercial uses and zoning that you would see around those orange dots in the rural nodes that are on the overall land use plan.
Yeah. In this concept, we had, we explored, okay, what would it look like to have a tractor supply, have a gas station, have a fast food restaurant, have like a Dollar General? But from a land use perspective, it would be ideal to have these things at key intersections where then growth and synergy can happen over time as opposed to randomly along your rural highways. That's really the bigger goal here. Do, do we want to stop right there? Are there any questions regarding Exhibit 14-1 and 14-2?
If anyone has a question, please raise your hand.
Are we having, are we having the session now?
Just quickly sharing what your, your comments about it, your concern before we talk more about it.
I have one comment, Carrie.
Yeah.
I failed to mention at the beginning of the meeting that our objective here tonight is to get all of these questions answered so that we can entertain a motion to approve this land use plan and send it on to the commissioners. So keep that in mind as the presentation continues and hopefully get all your questions and concerns addressed before we make that motion. Back to you, Carrie.
Okay.
Hold on. Philip Stone has a question.
Hey, Eric and Carrie. So one of my questions was, is, is some of these yellow and, you know, the, the orange areas are pretty specific, and obviously I see that it's on major corridors. If we get a request for, for something like this just outside of the orange dot, so to speak, how, how would that work? I mean, is that, does that change anything?
Yeah, well, one thing that we don't do in a scenario like this is get down to the very detailed parcel level. These nodes are meant to be the general location where you're trying to, you're not necessarily encouraging growth here as much as you're trying to discourage it in random locations. So we're trying to create some, again, predictability about growth over time. I do say in here explicitly, and let's go over to G1. Provide for neighborhood commercial appropriately as scale to serve residential uses. Basic architectural applicants proposing non-resident development that are not located at intersections identified on future land use map must demonstrate appropriate suitability such as location at an intersection, the character of surrounding land use, and factors supporting other policies of this land use plan. So this is some wording that Carrie and I worked on together that says, okay, if you don't want to be at this intersection, this, this maybe doesn't answer your question. don't want to be at this intersection, this, this maybe doesn't answer your question. This could be a scenario where someone just wants to be at a completely different location. Then the burden would be on them to say, okay, well, show us how this location kind of meets the same criteria as we laid out in the other locations, because we're completely open to that. So this is that flexibility that we're trying to happen here. Now, you asked, what if they're not right there at that exact location? I would imagine that that's just where common sense would come into play. You know, we, we did not get down to the parcel level and said, this is the parcel and this is the parcel. If that's the case, then we're just going to do a full-blown rezoning, and that's just not what we're after here. It's more about a strategic direction and a land use framework to guide you all and development community. So my answer would be, you, you're not going to apply this in a hyper-rigid parcel-level manner, it's just not the way it's designed to be. And Carrie, you might want to jump in too. Your, your philosophy as a planner, always going to influence something like this?
Yeah, this has really good criteria for us to, to review. Someone comes in with a request that's not in one of these locations, we apply this criteria to it. We apply the zoning ordinance implications are, are how we allow certain districts in those areas. If something is not on that node and it's, maybe it's too intense commercial use as well, we would say that it doesn't, it does or doesn't suit. It's going to be very subjective to the, or, we have to remain objective, let's say, to the criteria in the plan. And I'll be going through that, you know, when we get a request and we've got to do a staff report, that's going to be a really important piece of it.
So, this is Corey Scott.
Hey.
So let me just clarify, so I'm looking at the, at the, the yellow dot map, you know, the key map, and it, I think what you're trying to say is that, you know, there's the example of where you've got a area where the Monroton Fire Department is and, and the low-density area around it, and what your, the idea is that, we're not, we're not saying that that high-density examples of G2 controlled growth areas has to be at that intersection. It, it can be in that area as long as the infrastructure supports it. And then, and, and, so our flexibility is, is, you know, we'd like in that general area something like this design to be implemented, but it's not, it's not locked in concrete that has to be at that intersection, so to speak, right? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. And we're, it's real important to note, we are not rezoning any of this property right now. None of this property is going to be, is going to change its character at all. We are, we have just identified areas that would be appropriate for this type of transect, G3 transect, and, and given them as examples.
Thank you.
So again, exhibit 14-1, 14-2, these are meant to be guides, they're meant to, again, provide a framework. They, they're a scenario, this is not how it has to be developed by any means. As mentioned, the last time I was there, speaking to you all in person, we talked a little about missing middle. We talked generally what the spirit of this land use plan seeks to move beyond just abundant single-family homes. And then what's happening in a lot of other communities, it's either a bunch of single-family homes or it's a whole lot of large apartment buildings and complexes. But how do we start to accommodate somewhere in the middle there, or at least provide the flexibility to see if the private development market will respond if we provide the flexibility in the ordinance? So we spent some time really encouraging that type of development. You're going to see redevelopment that's going to come through, that's going to be planned unit development, or it's going to be conditional district rezonings, and we're trying to provide a framework to encourage, you know, different types of housing types and so forth, which we spent some time laying out. So I know you all have had plenty of time to review that and exhibit 16, these have been in here for a while. Spent some time talking about the target growth area, which this is the, the G3, like the red area, where we know water and sewer is going to be at play. If we've got sewer coming to these areas, we certainly have to drive up the, the density average in order to, for the county to get its return on its investment to these areas. I'll jump back really quick to the future land use map. Some of Carrie mentioned, Main Street communities. The preservation of existing historic Main Streets, Madison, Maedan, and, and other places throughout the county are very important to us as planners. What we want to do is if we create like a village atmosphere or create new commercial, and one of the renderings that's in this plan, and I'll go to that here shortly, illustrates that, we, we want to have enough distance from the other Main Streets where you're not impeding on that market. What we're trying to do is acknowledge there's another market, there's, there's enough people that could come into one area that would never get to the Madison area regularly. So you basically have the demand there, we think, to create another small village of sorts. So paying attention to the historic Main Streets that you have right now was foremost in our mind. If you look at exhibit 18, here you have a village concept. This is very far south, you know, down on the Rockingham line where this concept comes to play. This is on Bennett Farm Road, but it's right off the highway. Water and sewer will go right through this site. So can we capture some new commercial-related development, create a place, create housing around that, that creates some life? While trying to capture some of that market from adjacent counties and essentially create economic development.
Here we're talking about G4, I think you said three earlier, Eric, I wanted to make sure that this is not the rural nodes, this is the area to the, on the, at the 220, there we go. Is it right at 22065?
Well, I was mentioning like the G3, the mixed-use center.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I think you, sorry.
Yeah, so the G, the G2 kind of surrounds it out here and, and actually the rural nodes. So this is G, this, the G3 represents what we would call your target growth area. Economic development, we worked with Lee and her team, talk about business industry, we referenced a couple of the shovel-ready sites that are available. Exhibit 21 is a new exhibit where we emphasize a partnership with Rockingham Economic Development Tourism and your historic Main Streets, elevating those from an economic development standpoint. So as they continue to partner with them, again, we're outside of the zoning purview, but this is crucial from an economic development standpoint. It's a big part of the type of work that we do as a firm all over the southeast and, frankly, you all have some, some jewels, some nice jewels of, of assets throughout the county, so we want to try to support those in this, and goal number two or three referenced that. Four, we highlight a lot of the DOT-related upgrades. We also reference advocating for 221 to be upgraded to I-73 and a few other more long-range items. We've spent some time over the last three or four weeks finalizing the infrastructure maps. You all, things are progressing so fast, we can hardly keep our maps up to date on that, but we've managed to get those as up-to-date as they could possibly be. Parks and Recreation, this was, has been in there, we, we highlight the Recreation map, the Pathways map, Blue's Park. And then implementation brings back the, the emerging principles and so forth. I'm seeing a misspelling right here, so I'm making a note. We bring back the guiding principles that were at the end of Chapter 3, and this is what connects Chapter 3 to Chapter 4 and provides you all with a nice summary of, of the various policies and so forth.
These are the, these are the questions that we're going to ask of any request. Does it meet this policy? Does it do this? Does it do that for transportation in making decisions? And what I mean, rezoning recommendations?
Well, I'm trying to share a screen.
Will we see the, step one of the four steps?
So Carrie, I'm not sure, do you want to, I'm not, I don't know if there are questions regarding density averaging or?
I just, I want to show, I'd like to show that one that you just had up. The four steps to rural sprawl. These are a couple of graphics that I have that help demonstrate the difference between large lot zoning and smaller lot, more concentrated zoning.
There you go.
This is a good place to start. The, note that the, the brown and the top, the top image is farmland. So that's an example of existing farmland. At the lower left is classic cul-de-sac, large lot zoning that our ordinance has now in it, and really is the only alternative that it has. The right-hand slide is the same amount of acreage, the same number of homes. So it's the same amount of acreage, the same number of homes, but in the lower right, the farmland is preserved, they're all, it's all part of the, of a zoning case. This might have been a 500 acres. We want to put all 500 of it in cul-de-sacs, or we want to put 100 of it in homes and leave 400 conserved as farmland. So this is a classic example of the same, same density, same overall density, same number of homes, overall acreage, but a totally different land use pattern that actually does end up preserving a lot more open space, giving us a lot more open space. The other one is the four steps, if you can put that one on. Is a really, really good example of what we're discussing now, is what typically happens with large lot zoning, dictated lot sizes. Shoot. It's all right if we can't get to it.
Give me one second.
Okay. There we go. So this is, Eric, this is the first one. Are you set? Are you queued up, Eric?
I don't know what's going on.
Okay, never mind. It went by, there it was.
Okay, I've got, I've got a black screen here, I don't know what happened.
Yeah, so do we. All right. I don't know if, if it's worth me presenting, let's give you another minute to bring something up.
There you go.
So this, this is an example of, let's say it's that same farmland that was in the graphic before. There's the, the farm place and the, the acreage around it. So the first thing that happens is the farmer sells property along the road to developers who create multiple driveways along the road. The next step is the road, roadways get built between those homes and the farmer just can't keep up with the farmland, so he's selling, and this is the next pattern that happens. The next thing that happens is the cul-de-sac neighborhood. This is a really, really typical land use progression in this area. Starts with the farm on the roads, streets, and then cul-de-sacs. The point of this is that farm has just been completely converted to housing development. The larger lots are green, but they're, they're not, they're not rural. This really isn't rural, in, in my opinion, and in, in the opinion that we want to, to promote. This is still allowed, I mean, there's no, there's no reason why we don't, can't have development like this. When you go to the next, if Eric can bring up the density, neighborhood densities, we have quite a few neighborhoods that are, that are, meet this density of one unit per acre, which is basically an average of acre lots. So nothing wrong with that, we have, we have a lot of that, people desire it, this needs to be market-driven. Point of this is that, that, that graphic you saw where the lower right, the smaller lots and the more clustered homes have the same density as these neighborhoods. And that the density, the unit an acre, or 1.1 or 1.5, is very close to what we have now. And I think Colley, yeah, Colley Brook, the Colley Brook Farm with 1.73, almost two homes per acre, is so far the largest thing we have. Now that, that will be two homes per acre over just 100 acres. So we've got 800 acres right here that's, that's completely.
That's probably a proper farm.
Turned over to lots, that's completely developed. And we're looking for some alternatives.
And a land use plan like this doesn't necessarily get you there, but what it does provide is an alternative. Right now, there's, there's only one way to really develop. What we're trying to do is provide the developer with multiple ways to potentially develop.
And the, the idea is to do, is to develop hand-in-hand with the market that drives the developers' choices. And so if the, if the developers' requests coming from a market-driven scenario, we are giving them alternatives that allow them to, to meet that demand.
Carrie, if I may comment?
Sure.
Members, I'm the one that was opposed to changing the lot size.
Yeah.
For density. But I can see now, after having talked with Eric and Carrie in more detail about that, that density has some other advantages as far as water and sewer are concerned, where a master well or master septic system can be used. But it goes a lot farther to preserving the farmland, as that illustration that Carrie just showed you does, than sticking with minimum lot size. So I'm now dropping my opposition to maintaining the minimum lot size requirement and switching to a sliding scale of density depending on the size of the project.
And the further, at that point, the point of, we're at a point of departure where we discuss that further with the UDO discussion. Because everybody's wondering, what does that mean? What does that scale? What does that density look like? What are the zoning districts? That will be discussed in the UDO. This is trying to help you understand the basis for that regulation, once we do get to it.
We have a question from Julie Talbott.
And you may have already answered this, but I'm wondering what, you know, when I just looked at this Colley Brook, would, does this drive sales, or does this drive the market? Or will the market drive this? And what impact? Are we almost in essence helping to sort of smooth the market in one place, or encourage the market in one place? Or in a direction?
Yeah, that's a good question, because we can't tell. For one, this doesn't mean we want everything to become developed. That's not what we're saying. What we're saying is, the market is going to dictate trends that we see, for instance, missing middle housing. And these alternatives, and the way we're going to be set up to approve or disapprove them, allow us to guide that growth and development, and that market-driven development into a certain form.
So it is, it's not necessarily chicken/egg, but it's chicken/egg? I mean, it seems like to me, it's almost circular.
And that's the way it works anyway, but usually, the planning side doesn't often pay enough attention to the market side. And so you just end up at loggerheads all the time. You just end up at us versus them, development versus planning. And this is intended to provide a regulation that would allow the flexibility to balance the market demand with how we want our county to look.
I think this is particularly fascinating that we could, this allows us to be able to let the market drive partially the growth, but also keep it, keep the county or our community looking, or feeling a certain, not a certain way, but feeling more like what we envisioned from a long-range plan. Gosh, that was, that's sort of nebulous.
That makes sense. Well said.
Yeah, there's really two keys to this. One part of it is creating the target growth area. There's so much, there's only a certain amount of demand out there to develop. If you all can just simply get that growth to go in the right locations, that's step one. I mean, that's a good thing, because that means that you're not allowing that growth just to sprawl out throughout the whole county and to disrupt the entire rural nature of the county. That's the point of having a target growth area. And we want to create flexibility and maximize the density in those areas, so there's not, you know, thousands of homes spread out, but they're in very defined areas. So that's step one, is guiding that growth in that fashion. Step two is, can we get the developer to go to the next level? Can we get them to design in a way in which there's missing middle housing, and there's all types of, you know, whether or not you're retired, or whether or not you have a family, and so forth. You can have different types of people in a community based on the housing type. And that's where you see communities come to life, you see, you can see some good design that we've laid out, and so forth. So we've put you in a position where you could achieve both of those. And what's going to happen is you're going to do, your planner is most likely going to encourage a conditional district rezoning, and so you're going to see a site-specific master plan. Well, now you all are going to have an adopted vision and an adopted plan, and I think you're going to see a little bit more creativity and emphasis in areas that you haven't seen in the past, because you've now cast a vision for what you would like to see, as opposed to just having the market just kind of dictate to you, and there just not being much predictability there.
Philip Stone has a question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Carrie and Eric, a lot of this on this map is very dependent upon water and sewer infrastructure. So a lot of this is going to be conditioned upon when we, when that comes in. If we were to adopt, or when we are to adopt this, and there's a request that comes up in one of these nodes, you know, the orange nodes, or even the yellow, how will we deal with that from a planning, when it comes to infrastructure that may not already be there?
The way we do it currently is to, is to give the developer an opportunity to tell us what type of tax benefit we would gain by expending the capital to put that infrastructure there. And generally, it doesn't pay to run lines far from that center. So the development stays close to the trunk line, if you will, the 220 trunk line. And then we've got a few sort of arms that are potential areas for higher development to come. But if a property is far from that area, Philip, and somebody says, "I want to build 30 homes, and I want water and sewer," we're going to run it through that numbers, and the return on investment probably won't be, it won't be such that we would agree to build it.
Can I give one example area?
Yes, absolutely.
Let's just take Stanley and Ellisboro Road. That's, there's an orange node there, and there's a lot of growth around the lake right there. And obviously, we don't have any infrastructure anywhere close to that location at this time, as far as water or sewer.
So if you go back into the policies for those growth areas, we are not assuming that you're going to have water and sewer at those nodes. That's where we, I had mentioned earlier, we're talking about shared septic fields, and I think the chairman even mentioned, like, a master well, or master septic, and so forth. So those areas would require some real flexibility. And this is the challenge whenever we do a county land use plan, is you're really hemmed in by your infrastructure in terms of creativity. What we've tried to do with that Exhibit 14.1, 14.2, is show how things would kind of develop in a more classic format, and one of those, some level of creativity. But yeah, if you read the policies there, we're not even suggesting that you run sewer out to those node locations. The county has to be very strategic in terms of where it runs its sewer, and where it deems, or where it gives capacity up. Because you only have so much capacity. So that's why you have to maintain the growth area, which is that dark red G3 area.
Everything along Ellisboro Road would, I imagine it would be a while before you would see a lot of density that's different from what's there right now. I was opening up a map. It was Ellisboro. Where was it that you were asking about, Philip?
Well, I mean, we could use two different intersections. Ellisboro at Stanley, and Ellisboro at maybe Sardis Church, I believe that is.
Okay.
In regards to the G2.
So these are not currently identified as rural nodes? Oh, that is identified as a rural node. So it would just, we would encourage development, more compact development in that area, but the intensity and density of the development would only be as great as it could be with available soils and wells. I don't know if I got to your question or not.
You did.
You sure?
Are there any other questions from the members for Eric or Carrie?
One point I would like to make is this is really far future. This is a plan that is intended to guide us for another 20 years. So...
I have a question. This is, if we adopt this, February, the commissioners are supposed to vote on it, does this have any impact on the planned subdivisions that were noted already? I think Colley Brook is one of them.
No, they're already underway.
They're already underway.
Actually, the site plans for Colley Brook are still in the hands of the Technical Review Committee, TRC. And there's some minor issues with hydrant locations, and cluster mailboxes, and little details like that that are being worked out. But other than that, the Colley Brook has been rezoned, and it's ready to go to shelf.
So we're not, we're really not looking at anything until 2024, maybe?
Possibly.
Okay. Yeah, and I, so I wonder what, you know, we can't retro, because it just seems like to me that of the case, in thinking about the cases that we've heard, there have been a number of developers that have come in, and they're looking at 100-acre tracts, 200-acre tracts. And I'm just wondering what we can do to get this going, if we decide to pass this, and I'm just fascinated by this plan anyway, what we can do to encourage that now, as we're talking to developers?
Well, certainly, I think if a developer were to approach this body right now with a request to rezone a 100-acre tract that was far away from one of these future land use nodes that are on Map 10, I think we would have to argue that it doesn't fit within the land use plan. I think, Carrie, is that what we're getting at doing here?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, if you have 100 acres that wants to develop, like, similarly to what we're developing now, we're not, we're really not saying it can't be. I mean, what the nodes are more for higher intensity in those centers.
Okay.
And that, one of the assumptions is also that we are going to grow. I mean, we're getting more populous, and we, there's more of us than there were, and there will be more of us than there are now. And we're hoping that those investors interested in 100 acres focus on areas like this. But we really, we really aren't saying the only place that we're developing is at these nodes. We're not saying that.
So we can create a node somewhere if a developer finds, you know, 200 acres somewhere that they want? And I guess that sort of leads into my next question. What does this do? I've noticed that we've had some requests from developers, but the landowners that they're, the sellers come along with them, and they want to sell their family farm, because they don't want the family farm anymore. So if we're sort of limiting it to these nodes, what does that do to future, say, family farmers? They, you know, it's families, and they want to give up their farm, and they want to settle to a developer, and it's sitting in the right place, but, you know, but, and what you're saying is we're not necessarily constricted, we're not constricted to these nodes where they are. It's the opportunity.
That's correct.
Well, I think what you're saying is that if, is that if they want to use that 200 acres, could we, could we guide them into the structures that we're seeing in the 14.1, 14.2, so that they, instead of just building houses like we saw on the earlier map, you know, that they use different styles of housing and stuff like that? And I think that's what our job is, is to guide them in that direction, so that we get better use of the land.
Yeah, and those nodes are not, every 100-acre housing development is not a node. Those nodes are about a mix of residential and non-residential development, and a mix of housing types at crossroads intersections. The 100 and 200 acre farm may be located in that, in one of those areas, but it's more likely located out in the county, where we would look at a rezoning and subdivision, not as a node, but as a typical, similar to what we have now, subdivision.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that, and start to have the discussion regarding the UDO, which we'll be looking at the next time we all get together, is this is where the density average comes into play. That 200-acre farm, as it is now, you've got an ordinance where basically you've got 100, 1-acre lots, period, and that's all you can do. You're going to now move that into a density average, where they can cluster homes in certain areas, preserve other areas, and be a little bit more creative in that design. I think that is probably going to be more of your benefit in that particular scenario as it relates to this land use plan and the new UDO that's coming down the pipe.
And they may or may not be able to do that, depending on the soils that are available, how close they are to potential water and sewer. But it will, it will, it's got to be a case-by-case basis, and this, and here's how we want to encourage you to develop.
And I'd like to just make a comment, Eric and Carrie, as well. A lot of these 200, 100-acre, 200-acre parcels, the land is not all going to lay well enough to put those acre, acre and a half lots. So you could cluster and then still keep your buffer zones from streams, and have some recreation availability on those as well.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and if you didn't want to put open space into a common area, you could have some really, really large lots, and then some really small clustered lots, and some variation in between as well. There's going to be a lot more flexibility, but your points well made.
So this could actually be more attractive to developers, and really even sellers, too, because instead of, there's always the push and pull of, everybody has their own reasons for either buying or selling pieces of property, or developing, not developing, pieces of property. Everybody's going to get something out of it. And this creates that, there's no, less tension, or less, I want only what I need to get out of it, instead of there's some commonality.
Flexibility.
Yep.
Right, and it turns out that clustering homes and leaving other areas open does incur much lower development costs. There's less linear footed roads. There's less linear footed roads.
Less impervent surface.
Smaller, potentially smaller cleared areas. And there are less environmental areas that have to be dealt with. Not only the expense on the development side, but certainly it's very important to note, too, that we're talking about the potential to do, to be a lot more environmentally protective of areas that aren't suited for development, like, like Philip said.
Are there any other questions? Comments? Then I believe we should consider a motion to adopt the plan and send it off to the commissioners.
I make a motion that we adopt the plan and send it to the commissioners.
I'll second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the land use vision plan, 2020. All those in favor, please.
Can I iterate to recommend adoption? I'm sorry, Paul, but it's important that the record reflects that you're recommending adoption.
Yes.
By, to the board of commissioners.
Didn't we just say that?
Well, I just want to make sure that you didn't agree to adopt it.
I'm not sure.
You didn't recommend adoption.
I make a motion that we recommend adoption to send to the commissioners.
Oh, yes. Isn't that what you first?
Thank you.
I think I did, but let's just clarify.
Okay.
Do we say this? And that's what we're adopting, should we mention?
Yes. We're recommending to the commissioners that the plan be adopted, is what we're doing. So the motion has been restated.
I'll second.
The second has been reconfirmed. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the planning board recommends that the commissioners adopt the plan. Since we have no old business, Carrie, did you have some new business you wanted to discuss with the members?
The next steps, what we, we anticipate next are, the board of commissioners could actually be adopting this in January while you are introduced to the UDO in parallel. So we have several cases for the January 11th planning board meeting. So we're suggesting a second meeting in January on the 25th to keep clear of cases so that we can be starting to discuss the UDO. The board of commissioners may very well have already adopted the land use plan at that point, but we can, we'll be looking at the UDO now sort of in, in parallel. And we thought, too, that there should be two meetings where you're discussing the UDO, two full meetings of UDO discussion with no cases on the agenda. So that would be January 25th and the regularly scheduled optional second meeting in February, which is, I believe.
22nd.
22nd, thank you. So I just wanted to mention that to see what everybody's availability was going to be like and how you felt about, that's four, that's two meetings in the next two months we're asking you to commit to, so that we can get through this in a, in an efficient but not rushed manner.
Is there anyone that has a problem with that?
Clarity. Just, so the 11th of January, correct. 25th of January.
Right.
And when was the, I know we got the 25th of February. What was the other?
The second, fifth, Monday of February.
The eighth.
Eighth.
Got it.
February the eighth and then February the 22nd.
So unless you're going to be in Europe, I guess we don't have a problem.
On that schedule, we would be recommending, you would be recommending adoption of the UDO at the February 22nd meeting, if you're comfortable with it at that point. And then the board of commissioners would hear your recommendation in March. They, by the way, hold a public hearing for recommend, for adopting both land use plan and, or UDO. It's a process that's very much, very, very like or the same as a rezoning request. They hold a public hearing and make a decision at that point. Since there are more than 50 properties involved, that's the threshold, the, instead of a postcard mailing, we can opt to take out a larger ad in a newspaper of general circulation. We're just, we're doing some pricing right now to decide where, where's the best bet for that. But as far as a notice of public hearing for those meetings.
When, when do we anticipate the first draft of the, of the UDO?
I didn't hear, sorry.
When do we anticipate the first draft of the UDO for us to start to get our heads around?
The 28th of this month. Eric is going to try to get you a full draft.
Okay.
Copy digitally. We can, on request, we can make paper copies at that time. We also can bring paper copies to the January 11th planning board meeting. Eric, do you have anything to add to that?
No, that's correct. And I'm also preparing a memo that's going to list out like the, kind of like the top five, eight, 10 changes in this, inside this UDO compared to its current state. But in, in a lot of ways, the UDO will simply be implementing the policy and the density and so forth that is outlined in the, in the land use plan. But there are certainly some significant changes that we're making, and we'll list all those out.
Yeah.
They're significant, but they're not hard to get your mind around, so.
That's right. We're going to let you know what, a sort of a summary of what's different to help you get through it.
So Carrie, the, the first meeting that we're going to be reviewing the UDO is the 25th, correct?
Of January, correct.
Yeah, so you'll have basically four weeks to review the document before we ever meet for the first time. And as always, I'm available for phone call, emails, like if you all want to talk through anything during that four-week period, I'm more than willing and available.
And we'll be, we'll be doing like as we normally do for regular planning board meetings, we'll be saying, the, here's the UDO digitally, and anyone who wants it before the 11th of January, please ask. And I'm just doing it that way, instead of just automatically giving everybody a paper copy, just because we have that opportunity to bring things and save, save a little postage and a little mail or a little printing to bring it on the 11th. But we have no objection to printing the entire thing right after it's first shared digitally, if you need it. We can also have folks come by to pick it up to, to help with postage a little bit.
Anything else, Carrie?
No.
Okay. Since there's no other new business, motion to adjourn, anyone?
No motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made to adjourn, seconded by Matt Cardwell. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the meeting is adjourned.